May I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshawaken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Council this evening did have an executive session prior to our regular work session on legal and property matters. We have nothing under presentations tonight. The first item is we have is under land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. The first item is a public hearing on a conditional use application for 922 Fayette Street with Omni LLC applicant. I will turn this over to Mr. Eastburn this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Eastburn. I'm here tonight for the solicitor for the borough, Mike Peters. This is a, I'm sorry, let me start and just make sure that we are on the record now. Thank you. So this is the scheduled date and time for a conditional use hearing for the application that was submitted by Omni LLC for the property located at 922 Fayette Street, Conshawaken, Pennsylvania. The parcel number for this property is 0500-03012-007. The property is located in the RO Residential Office District. And the reason for this application is the applicant seek relief under zoning ordinance section 27 dash 1203 subsection 1. That section permits by conditional use, a professional office for the practice of medicine, law, engineering, architecture, or design, real estate, insurance, or financial consultation, but not for management consulting. However, that same provision of the zoning ordinance subsection 8 permits other uses of similar intensity and scale. So section 27 dash 1204 of the zoning ordinance contains the various standards that apply to conditional uses in that zoning district, which I'm sure the applicant's attorney will walk everybody through tonight. I'm just going to mark a few different borough exhibits. The first I've marked as B1 is the application with a narrative addendum. There's also three exhibits which are marked as A through C. Exhibit A is the lease between the property owner and the applicant. That was dated November 11th, 2022. Exhibit B to the application is a use and occupancy permit application, also dated November 11th, 2022. And finally, exhibit C is the floor plans for the first, second, and third floors of the existing building on the property. The second board exhibit B2 is an extension of time by the applicant for the relevant time periods under the MPC. Those time periods extend until January 31st of 2023. Exhibit B3 is a series of photographs of the exterior and interior of the building, 10 pages total. Exhibit B4 is the borough zoning officer zoning determination dated November 30th, 2022. B5 is the Borough Planning Commission report on the application, and that's from the December 8th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, which recommended approval of the application. And finally, for the board proof of, I'm sorry, B6 is proofs of publication. The application was advertised as required by law. I'll also note that the property was posted on December 19th of 2022. Just a couple more matters before I turn it over to the applicant. In terms of party status for the members of the public who are here tonight, if you'd like to make a comment regarding this application, you'll be given the time to do so at the end of the hearing. However, in addition to just giving comment, there's also an opportunity for certain people who are here tonight to become an actual party to this application, to this proceeding. What that means is being a party, you would have the right to ask questions of any witnesses that are presented tonight by the applicant. You could also present your own witnesses, and you'd also be able to present legal argument if you had any to the borough. Finally, maybe most importantly, as a party, you would have the right to file an appeal of the decision that council does make if you're dissatisfied with the result in any way. So you do not have to be, become a party in order to give public comment, but you do have to be a party if you are going to be looking to file an appeal of this decision. So in order to have standing to become a party, generally, you must be specifically affected by this application. For example, if you live immediately next door. So if anybody here does desire to become a party, what we can do is we'll discuss your interest in the application. So I'll turn it over at this time. If you do, if there is anybody in attendance who does wish to become a party tonight, would you please just raise your hand and identify yourself, please? Okay, and for the record, I see no response. Finally, just at the end of the application, if anybody does wish to give public comment, I would just ask for you again to identify yourself and speak loudly and slowly, I'm probably speaking a little too quickly right now, just to make sure we have an accurate record of the proceeding. So thank you, everyone, for your time. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's counsel for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, President Leonard and members of the council. My name is Andrew Sloan. I am the attorney for Omni LLC. It's a management consulting company and the prospective tenant of the subject property at 922 Fayette Street. I have the applicant owner, Sarah Burlou, with me tonight to give her testimony, as well as the property owner, Dr. Bill Sabonis, if you have any additional questions for him as well. So without further ado, I guess we should swear in Ms. Burlou.
Are you sure you know this? Because you're just putting your mouth together with the truth and the whole truth. We just need to explain. Sure. Sarah Burlou, S-A-R-A-H-E is a boy, U-R-L-U-W.
Ms. Burlou, what's your current home address?
2094 Julio Drive, Conshawaken.
And are you the sole member of Omni LLC?
Yes.
And Omni LLC is a certified women-owned business and certified women-owned small business?
Yes.
And the owner of the property, that's Dr. Bill Sabonis?
Yes.
Your LLC entered into a lease to rent the property located at 922 Fayette Street in November of 2022, is that correct?
Yes.
And this property is a three-story Victorian-style building?
Yes.
Okay. Is there onsite parking near the property?
Yes.
Okay, and that's at the rear of the property off of Forest Street?
Yes.
Okay. And the property fronts on both Fayette Street and Forest Street, is that correct? This property is located in the RO Residential Office District?
Yes.
And Omni LLC is a management consulting firm that primarily assists clients in the healthcare industry, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And the use of, your use would be for office space by the LLC?
Yes.
And that would be mostly for administrative purposes?
Yes.
And to meet with clients?
Yep.
Okay. And the business hours would be from Monday to Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Yes.
And how many employees do you have?
11. And they don't all currently reside in this area.
Okay. So will they all be, they will never be at the office at the same time, I would imagine?
Unlikely.
Okay. And are they full, are they fully in the office or are they remote?
We are a remote-first company, so this will be a perk offering for people.
Great. And you propose no interior or exterior alterations to the building?
Correct, no alterations.
And you're going to utilize the existing signage with, just with text changes?
Yes.
Okay. And the building facade will also remain the same?
Yes.
Okay. Will the front porch remain the same as well?
Yep.
And there's no parking between the front of the building and Fayette Street, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Do you perceive any adverse impact on the neighborhood or community if your use is permitted?
No.
And do you believe your use is consistent with the historic use and uses along Fayette Street?
I do.
Do you know of anyone who has spoken in opposition to your project?
No, not that I'm aware of.
And you've also received Planning Commission recommendation of approval, is that correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions, but if council has questions for the applicant, feel free to go ahead and ask.
Sarah, I do have one question. I know that there is parking in the rear, and it probably was in our notes, and forgive me for not remembering, how many parking spots are about?
Eleven.
Eleven.
One handicap.
That's wonderful. And you already stated that your employees mostly work remotely and that they will sometimes be in the office. So there's no issue for parking for employees or clients with 11 spaces since you very rarely will have that many people in the building?
Not that I can foresee, yeah, for that reason.
And I can understand-
They're not at all in this area.
Right. And I can understand where down the road that could happen.
Sure.
That would be a good sign for you, correct?
That would be a great sign.
Okay. So.
To actually build on that, because I know that in your letter, you noted that there's possible growth, that you're looking to kind of grow in this building. So is that a concern, maybe with the parking, would that remain, that those individuals, it's just organic growth? And so those employees would be following the same remote follow-up avenue?
Yes. Yeah, we're still would be a remote-first company, and not everyone is going to be located in this area. We're recruiting from across the country.
Okay.
So it'd be rare that we would all be in the same place at the same time.
That's great.
How often do you get clients to come to your office?
I mean, right now, zero times, because we work in a coworking space in Manayunk. I would say maybe once a quarter at most. Typically, when we meet with clients, it's in their offices.
Anyone else?
Can you tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure. Yeah, so I started my career at a big consulting firm and then went in-house and worked for, on the other side as a client, and then I came back to consulting because I realized you can build really incredible strategies and plans, and then they struggle and fail, not because they weren't good plans, but because you didn't take the time to build and coach and develop the people that you were asking to realize that vision. So the work we do with clients is focused on helping build the strategy, but also the people behind it.
Sure. That's great. Does anyone else? Council have any questions? No more questions. Thank you for coming in this evening and welcome to Conshawaken.
Thank you for considering it.
You're welcome.
So seeing no further questions from council, I'm just going to turn to the members of the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to give public comment on what you've heard tonight regarding this application? Okay, again, just for the record, see no response. So I'll ask the applicant's counsel, is the record now closed from your standpoint?
Yes, it is. Again, thank you for your time tonight. We believe that, you know, the conditional use application requires that we keep the facade the same, we've testified to that, that, you know, there's no parking in front of the property, we've testified to that. And so we're hopeful that you guys grant our application.
And aside from the board exhibits I've already marked, I'll introduce those into the record. Are there any other additional exhibits you wish to admit?
No additional exhibits.
Okay. So we're going to close the record at this time. This matter is going to be continued to Borough Council's voting meeting on January 18th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. That's going to be here in this room in Borough Hall, 400 Fayette Street, Conshawaken, PA, 19428. Borough Council intends to vote on the application at that evening. So we'll just continue until then, and that closes this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Thank you for wanting to be in Conshawaken.
I'm a proud resident, so I'm excited to be able to take a bike to work.
That's great. You too. Thank you, Mr. Eastburn.
Thank you. That's it, she couldn't leave, right? Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is under council business. It is conducting interviews for the Main Street Overlay Task Force. So the first item, first person this evening for interview is Bill Tavanas. Mr. Tavanas, if you could come up?
Bill, you're up. You're up. You're the first one.
You're up, yes, you are.
How are you all doing?
Good.
Hello.
I'm good.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for your interest in serving the borough.
Yeah, I am interested, of course.
You can sit down, relax.
Yeah, I am interested in participating if I could. I've been a practicing chiropractor for years in Conshawaken. I've been a real estate investor for almost just as long. I tried to, personally with my properties, I tried to maintain the architectural integrity of those properties, which isn't always easy with some of these older buildings. And I just feel there's a need to try to coordinate what's happening from the lower end to the upper end, in that space in the middle that we're having a problem with. I have some ideas that I'd like to participate with the group. And I think 8th to 12th Avenue in particular would be an area that, you know, we could do a lot better with. Again, I'm not sure how that responds to the zoning concerns for that area, but the overlay district is something I would like to participate in.
And that is exactly what the group is for?
Yes.
So I appreciate-
Do you have any specific questions?
Well, you answered a lot of them already, just through, just through what you said, honestly. Surprise, surprise, right?
Yeah.
So-
I mean, is there more than a few positions? I'm not sure.
Steph, we have how many business and resident?
We have up to nine. There are two members of council, two administrators, and then the rest would be filled with what has to be three business owners and two residents, is what we're really looking for.
Yeah. So, and there's no one on it yet, this is the first process of it, so.
I understand. But like I said, given the opportunity, I'd like to participate. I'm going to hopefully have a little more time to do that soon.
That's wonderful. So I will ask you a question unrelated. What is it that I know that you've been in Conshawaken for many, many, many years? What is it about Conshawaken that keeps you here?
Oh, listen-
And that you, I would say love.
I've seen, you know, I was here before Conshawaken, anybody wanted to be in Conshawaken.
Yeah.
It was a long time ago, and the people, the people have been great. Not only the people that I met here initially, the people that they've now attracted in this, and I've seen the growth in this town, which is just incredible. And you see the vibrancy in that young group, and I still have a lot of those old patients still come to me that I've had for 40 years. So, yeah, Conshawaken's been very, very good to me. I'd like to be able to give some back.
That's wonderful. You're like me, you can appreciate the mix.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Yeah.
And, you know, that older group is starting to embrace some of that younger group now, too. I don't see it as so, such a disparity.
As divided, yes, yeah, yeah. So, me personally, I love having the younger people. You see the younger people, you see all the children, it's a great, it's a wonderful thing for Conshawaken. Does anyone else have a question?
I just want to compliment you on the beautiful building that was just part of the presentation.
Yeah, that's not easy to take an old building like that, especially with the radius porch and all that stuff.
Right.
Do you personally own any more in that RO district?
Well, I own 815.
Right.
My office, of course.
Right.
And 922. I've sold some other properties in Conshawaken recently. I used to own, I did a condo conversion down at Jones and Hector, right across from the bank. I'm sorry, from the bakery, I should say.
Yeah, there's going to be another one on the other side of Hector, I believe.
You're right, there's some.
Yeah. Cool, well, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions for Dr. Tavanas? Yes?
Not a specific question for you, but more just to add to what Stephanie had said. So we're looking at this as nine, nine-member group, and we actually have more applicants than that, which is wonderful, but it seems from what we've read, there's a whole lot of interest in saying everyone is going to do something to enable some overall for whoever might be those-
Yeah, listen, I'm going to support whoever's on that, whatever I can do to help.
Yeah, we just want as many people to come and participate, and there's a lot of value there.
I think so, too.
Thank you, Mr. Tavanas.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
I actually have a question.
Okay.
So, if you could make or change, or make one improvement to Fayette Street, what would it be? Because you did mention that you're interested in doing more with 8th to 12th Street, but I'm curious-
Yeah, you know, 8th to 12th, depending upon what happens with zoning up there, I would like to see some of that front yard used a little bit differently. I think that, that you, to have some more walkability, having all of those, you know, I'm not saying getting rid of all that grass up front, but I'd like to pull that front, that front space out a little bit more towards the street and see if we could have more of a diverse business community up there, you know, some retail, some reason to walk up there. You see the coffee shop is doing well, you see, you know, the hair salon, the deli. You just want to be able to have more walkability up there.
Right.
And I don't see it with the housing that's there, that that's going to be able to be done right now. So I'd like to see a change in that zoning for that upper avenue, and if that's possible, I think it would be helpful.
Are you willing to take responsibility of making a decision against that if it's what the majority of people-
Absolutely. Listen, I'm just going to give you some ideas. I have some, I had some architects make some suggestions to me also as what they thought might be helpful, and, you know, I just bounced off them how to make it work better. So, yeah, if it works, it's great, and if it's not, I'm certain somebody has some other ideas, too.
Thank you. This time, is everyone done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tavanas.
Go ahead.
And the next person for interview is Mr. Mariah, if you could come up, please? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Hello.
Questions for Mr. Mariah?
What's your idea?
Long time. So, you want me to commence?
We, well, usually we ask questions, that's where we, you don't have to speak.
I am interested in knowing if there is anything in particular that you are interested in changing about the overlay.
I can't, Adrian, if you just-
Is there anything that you are particularly interested in changing with this overlay?
The answer is yes to the interesting, interested. The question is, what do we do with that end of town to incorporate what Bill Tavanas just said and bring a fullness up there, if you will? As you know, participated in putting in a small pocket park up on that end, up on Sixth Avenue end. And I think that because we have at 12th Avenue, those two plots, one which is the dry cleaners and the other is Moore's old property, and I think we've been through enough self-flagellation over whether or not that should be used in a commercial sense to let me think, as a developer, what I would do if it were mine and if I had the stamina of a younger man to go do that. The answer in my mind is that if we do the transportation piece, which is a jitney, in order to tie that in, we need the ability for that jitney to turn around up at that end of town in some fashion that is central for people to know they could walk there and get on that jitney to get downtown. Because having it travel two, three blocks to the river, or two, three blocks to the west, and at the same time picking up people, might be difficult in getting it to be used the way we want it. So whatever is incorporated at that end of town, there is the large plot, and I know from personal relationships with Ernie-
Lauren Nally.
With Ernie, that he has a very strong interest in how that all comes apart or together also. So what I would like to see, not changed, but I think added to the process, are two things. First, if we slow the traffic down from Third Avenue to 12th Avenue, that would create a more walkable presentation to the people that live there. How do we do that in another world, in another time? What we did in that town was we put in two four-foot-wide bicycle lanes on either side. That compressed the traffic to a single lane and at the same time slowed it down from 35 to 40 miles an hour at 12th Avenue, down to a reasonable speed, making it therefore-
Can I ask you a question on that? You're referring to that being done, you're referring to that being done somewhere else?
Yes, ma'am.
And did they have parking on the street?
Yes.
And the bikers rode next to the cars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my question.
Right.
Okay.
And that slowed it down dramatically. However, now, when we get to the terminus up there at 12th Avenue, my vision is simply that we should allow a structure to be built that either will be similar to the one that I hope you've all seen, that it wants to be built on 7th Avenue and Fayette Street, wherein we could have commercial downstairs and two floors of residential suites upstairs. The trick is accommodating the parking to take care of the residential piece primarily. And so that would be one of the things I would like to change, and that is give us more height in that zoning district, in the one that currently exists, so that they could develop it for that purpose.
Are you planning on buying that property?
I'm sorry?
Are you buying that property?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, as a planner, the way to get somebody to go in there and do more or less what you wish, may be to give them an extra floor. In other words, instead of two stories, they can go three stories.
So you're saying, in terms of the actual zoning component?
Yes.
That would be a suggestion when we're looking at how the zoning changes potentially?
Exactly. When not, I don't know, you need a zoning change.
Right.
You may need some integral piece added to or subtracted. Yeah, that's, they're the things that I'd like to see, and I would love to see somebody talk to the dry cleaners and do something similar or more pleasant on that building, but that's, the marketplace will take care of that, so.
They do a good business there. They do, they do a good business there.
Right.
Yeah. It's just not pretty, that's all.
So there are the thoughts that I have, Adrian.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Mariah?
Hi, Stacy.
Thank you for coming in, Ms. Mariah. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Next person for interview is Mark Allen. Good evening, Mr. Allen. Thank you for coming in and thank you for your interest on our overlay committee. So my question for you is, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of the borough, Conshawaken, as it pertains to the Fayette Street overlay?
The greatest strengths of the borough as it pertains to Main Street?
Mm-hmm. Like, what does it have going for it that it'll work?
Sorry, I'm kind of like our buddy Julian, where I'm a little hard of hearing, so-
That's okay. So my, to make it easier, what does Fayette Street have going for it that this overlay will work to unite the top and the bottom?
I think it has really good roots so far as walkability is concerned.
Mm-hmm.
There are areas that need to be improved. I think we're hearing the upper avenues, everyone kind of likes the upper avenues to be improved, there's a lot of potential right there. So I would like the walkability, the whole way up Fayette, to be built up a little bit better.
Right. And with, with things to be able to do there, like shops and-
Yes, correct. Yeah, I have a number of ideas around how to incentivize businesses to come up.
Right, right. Which is our goal, so that's wonderful.
Yeah, for sure.
Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, have you previously served on any governing board of any type here with the borough?
Not technically in the borough itself, I would be new to this area of local government. However, I'm on the, I'm a member of the Greater Conshawaken Economic Development Council.
Right.
So that kind of dovetails nicely, I think, with some things we might want to do with the task force here. And then I, I know a number of local business owners on Fayette Street, I'm actually married to one, in fact, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Council. And so hopefully, it's like, we can maybe use some things from the Development Council to incentivize businesses to come up, and I could also have my ear to what the businesses want and how they can work at the Borough Councils. Do a lot of things. Have a number of ideas for that.
When you talk about the walkability, are you also in favor of what Mr. Mariah said about slowing traffic and, and just making it more friendly for pedestrians? I mean, people still have to drive and get where they're going to go, but they don't have to drive 50 miles an hour. They can get there.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, slowing traffic, of course, is going to be, I don't know if that entails just, you know, having more police presence out to do that. But for, you know, for me, like, just slowing traffic is one aspect, there are a lot of things I hear from, you know, friends and neighbors walk around like it's, you know, walk by, you know, abandoned gas stations and other gas stations where there are cars, you know, six inches from the sidewalk, you know, people, so it's not just a traffic issue, but also making it kind of a nicer place to, to be and walk as a family.
You mentioned that you know and are married to a local business owner. So, I'm curious, having that connection, what sense do you get from the local business owner community that they're hoping for in terms of the Fayette overlay?
Sure. So, there are things, everyone really loves events, and looking at the tenure plan and the community visioning that was done, a lot of residents seem to be really into events. So, wouldn't it be cool if, for events, maybe we involve local businesses more closely? For example, not just like saying, like, hey, local business can donate a bunch of stuff, but maybe, like, a summer concert series, for example. Maybe you engage a local business to do catering, so that business will kind of do the marketing on the borough's behalf, get more people to come out to the events. Businesses incentivize because they'll make some money. Catering, you know, it's kind of like everybody wins, like, that kind of stuff, where it's like, there's some kind of synergy between what the borough wants to do and what local businesses do.
We did have that discussion with, with Mr. Pieri a few years back, doing that down at Merrywood Park and having the restaurants there and having a, a meeting out, and the restaurants having their food, but it kind of just-
Petered out?
Fell to the wayside from them, yes, so. There really wasn't much interest there, so.
Okay.
We thought it was a great idea.
Yeah.
So, and maybe down the road, it will be again.
Yeah, for sure. Well, there may be-
I like it. So, anyone else have a question?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
For your interest. Appreciate it.
Mark, you applied as a resident, not a business owner. Is that correct?
Did you reply, apply for a residency seat?
Not a business owner, technically, but not in the borough.
Okay, thank you. Next person for interview is David Bissel. Good evening. I hope I, I hope I did pronounce your name correctly.
Bissel, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for your interest.
Sure.
So, what do you think is the most single compelling issue facing the borough, if you had one?
The borough or the overlay?
Just the borough in general. And you can do it from a overlay perspective. It doesn't matter.
I mean, I think the overlay is one of the biggest issues, which is one of the reasons I wanted to be on the council. I think the lower section of the overlay is, is great, obviously. I live down there. I walk to the restaurants and the bars. Once you get past about Second Street, I know I've heard a lot of people talking about making it more walkable, there's nothing to walk to. The problem is, you can make it as walkable as possible. No one's going to walk it if there's nothing to walk to. So, a big part of this council, I view, is trying to figure out ways to bring in retail and other things, like an art gallery, or comic book store, or whatever, just whatever it is, that people need reasons to walk there. Once there's reasons to walk, then you also have to figure out making it, slowing down traffic, all these other things to make it something that's going to draw attention to. But, you know, after you get past Second or Third Ave, it starts to look very disjointed.
Yes.
There's a bunch of eyesores on the street that I just don't, I mean, the lower section looks so beautiful now. I love all the developments they've put in. But then, once you get past it, there's, you know, the post office drives me crazy. It looks like a prison with the, with the chain link fence around it.
It drives us all crazy.
I don't know what the scope of what we are ultimately going to be in charge of doing, but I certainly have a lot of things that I would love to see improved, and anything that's in our scope, I would certainly work towards doing that. I am a resident. I'm also a business owner. Generally speaking, I've worked with a bunch of people in the borough. Chris Smalls, probably worked with him the most, but he can attest to, anything that I touch turns better. I rehab a lot of properties, and they all look a lot better when I get my hands on them. I just kind of have a vision for the town and a vision for properties, and just want to see this town continue to go kind of how it's been going.
That's wonderful. Anyone else on council have a question?
Yes, you noted that you have tenants. Is that correct? Are they in Conshohocken?
All of them are in Conshohocken. Almost all of them in Ward One.
So, I'm curious, one, how do you sell or represent Conshohocken to them? Or what are they telling you that they desire out of it, either from the reason they're moving here or what they still want?
How I sell Conshohocken is easy, because I do it all the time, and I love it. I, I deal with a lot of people in their twenties and thirties, but certainly older people too. And I am constantly pushing how great it is to walk to the train station, to walk to the River Trail, to walk to the bars and restaurants. You know, it's just a very young, walkable, fun time. People walk their dogs all over the place. It's just a great, walkable, fun community, especially for young professionals. But even, you know, I'm certainly tied in and friends with a lot of older residents and neighbors, and, you know, same thing for them as well.
Anyone else have any questions?
We all talked about what we would like to see on the upper, upper part of Fayette Street. But how do we get people come in to actually open these businesses? Do you have any plans for that?
Any ideas for it?
Yeah, any ideas, any thoughts on?
Is that in the scope of what we would be doing potentially?
Hopefully.
I mean, people say that they want, and they'll say a specific thing. Somebody has, like, we can't just go out and buy it and make it happen. Somebody has to, a business person or somebody has to come in.
Yeah, I mean, so a part of it would be building a momentum and plan that people can get behind and taking it to either the people that own these buildings, or other people in town, saying, listen, you know, Conshohocken's great, but there are some things that need to be improved, and this is what we envision. And if you work with us, it's going to be better for everybody, and you're all going to see the benefit down the road. So, it would kind of be coming up with that vision and selling it to the people in town, especially the business owners, if need be.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your response and your interest.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for loving Conshohocken. The next person for interview is Brian Magram. Magram, well, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for, thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you for your interest. So, what, what do you feel are the top three services that the borough provides to its residents and businesses, or what do you think they should be?
I mean, in terms of what the borough is providing, I mean, I think the first is, you know, safety, you know, making sure there's, you know, police presence, all that type of stuff, so residents feel safe. I think the second is the access to transportation, you know, maintaining the roads, making sure that, you know, I know the bike trails run by the county, but having the bike trails, having the train station, all that type of stuff. I think the third is probably the parks. You know, obviously, the, you know, there's a lot of people that live in Conshohocken, you know, in their twenties, and then start to have kids, and then move away because there's not enough open space for that. You know, you got a tiny little yard, but I think we also have some really great parks that in some ways are probably a little bit underutilized even, that I think, you know, the borough does a good job of maintaining them. We just need to get more people out and kind of offer more things in some of those parks. You know, even just having, like, you know, I feel like everyone, like, a third of the people in Conshohocken are, you know, have kids, a third have a dog, and then there's everybody else. I'm kind of in that everybody else category. But like, I met a friend at Merrywood Park the other day. He's like, oh, I got my daughter for work, you know, come over to see us at the playground. He's like, like, I didn't even know this playground existed, but like, I should not be hanging out in a playground, you know, without a kid. But I think, I think part of it is having, you know, but we also see the fitness stuff. You know, it's like, oh, they've added fitness at Sutcliffe, where you can go do that. They've got walking trails, areas where we can have, you know, cordoned off areas where people can walk their dogs. You know, let their dog off the leash and run around if they're in an apartment. Those types of things that I think are a really nice balance for all the different people.
I actually, I heard you mention all of those different amenities that we have, and I didn't hear you mention the community center. Are you actually aware we have a community center?
Oh, yeah.
What it offers? I'm just making sure.
Yeah, yeah, I've been-
A lot of people aren't. That, that's why I'm asking.
Yes. Oh, I should have, I kind of lumped the Fellowship House in with that. You know, I'm, I'm well past my basketball-playing days, but it, it's, you know, a nice facility, I think, especially for the younger kids that want to get out, you know, want to be able to, especially in the winter and those types of things of having a great place to play. And obviously, the Fellowship House has, you know, an amazing history. I always kind of bragged to my friends that come in to visit. I'm like, you know, Kobe's played here, and Rasheed Wallace, you know, all these guys that are in the NBA, you know, have played there.
Right.
I actually think that's something that, like, the borough could probably play up a little bit more. Because I feel like a lot of people don't even know that-
That's why I was asking you.
Yeah. No, I think a lot of people don't even know there's that part of the history. You know, there's a lot of, obviously, there's older, old Conshohocken people. My family's been in town for over a hundred years. But there's also a lot of newer people that are like, you know, I'm here, I go from my apartment to the train, you know, maybe to a bar, restaurant, and that's kind of it.
Right, right. They don't even know that there are even classes available for them there.
Exactly, exactly.
I was just curious on that. Someone else have a question?
So, Brian, you served on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force and was an integral part of developing that plan. The Main Street overlay task force will be a similar setup to that. How do you see, from what you learned, doing, working through the comprehensive plan, how do you see yourself bringing that information and helping kind of drive this task force?
Yeah, so, I was on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force, I think it was, what, 2016, 2017, something like that. But yeah, I, I think what I found was that there were some, some big things that we did that were really good, and I think we also found that there were people that got bogged down in the details. Remember, we're sitting in one meeting where we had two people that debated for twenty minutes how big the margin should be on the report. And you're just like, we've got to kind of focus on the bigger picture here of, you know, what we want to do. And there's going to be things that we kind of need to just say, you know, let's table this, you know, the old consulting technique of, here's the parking lot, let's put these over here. Let's kind of focus on the big rocks, and then the smaller things will fall into place. But I think some of the carryovers from that, you know, I know that this is largely focused on the upper end of Fayette Street, but I think we need to be thinking comprehensively about all of Fayette Street. So, it needs to be going down. I mean, there's always, you know, the intersection right before the bridge is a huge bottleneck. I think there's opportunities to connect, I use the bike trail all the time. Better connect the bike trail and the people in the offices and apartments that are down by the rivers, making the access for them up to Fayette Street easier, you know, getting into town, that type of thing. You know, so kind of connecting those pieces as well. And then I think in general, there's an opportunity, you know, you, I think you asked one of the other candidates about how do we encourage, you know, the right businesses to come in. I think part of that is making sure that that process is easy, you know, making sure, and, you know, obviously, we have to have safeguards in place in terms of any new business that opens, but also making that easier on the business owners, you know, and I, I look, you know, a small little, you know, little, you know, coffee shop, or bagel shop, or whatever, they don't have those same resources somebody like an AmerisourceBergen has to get through all the hoops. So, I think we want to look at that and try to make that as easy as possible. You know, the old, the old adage of, like, fail fast, like, let them come in, let them open, let them see if it works. If it doesn't work, let the next person come in and take their place. And that's kind of where you find those, you know, those success stories in those businesses that are going to be around for decades, you know, that everybody's, you know, still talking about.
Thank you. Thanks, good evening. Anyone else?
Yes, you mentioned spending twenty minutes on figuring out the margins, which leads me to this question. The task force will meet regularly once a month in the evening, and meetings will last approximately one to three hours, and often closer to the three-hour range.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering if your schedule will permit for you to regularly attend these meetings? I noticed you, in your application, wrote that you switched jobs, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so previously, when I was on the previous committee, I was working for FEMA, doing disaster relief. So, I was kind of at the whim of, you know, wherever they needed me to go, I would kind of get sent, and I would try to call in, that type of thing. I then founded a software company that keeps me here in Conshohocken. So, I live and work on Fayette Street. I have a home office attached to my house. My, literally, my office window looks out at the PNC Bank down the street. So, I literally see, all day, I see what's going on with traffic and foot traffic and, you know, everything that's kind of going on. But yeah, you know, one, one day a month shouldn't be a problem at all.
Thank you.
No more questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the consideration.
You're welcome. Thank you for your interest. The next person is Tim Beckel.
Can I stand? I know it's an interview.
Whatever you would like, whatever you're coming up with.
I'm a stand-up promoter for the EAC presentation, so.
Yes, good evening, Tim. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your interest. Does anyone have a question for Tim?
Why do you want to do this?
Well, to be honest, I love the conversation that I've seen so far, and it made me more excited to be on it, just because, but the short answer is, I think it's really important, and selfishly, I want to be involved in it, because it's going to set the path for the next five, ten, twenty years of the borough and how it's going to look, and, you know, what, what's going to be available to the residents. So, I want to be a part of it. For that reason, I think I bring some perspective of it. So, now, I've been on the EAC for five years, almost, so.
Is that long, really?
I know, and so, I've served as vice chair for the last couple of years. So, I bring that perspective. And I've always thought, you know, if you look at our peer communities in, in the region, your Ambler's, your Media, your Doylestown, they don't have the core advantages that Conshohocken has in terms of population and business activity. So, I've always wondered, what's going on with Fayette Street? Because those communities have a much more centralized Main Street feel, right? And I'm not, I don't have all the answers, of course. I think we've heard some really good ideas tonight. But I, I think it's really important, and I think, in addition to the EAC service professionally, I, I, where am I trained? I'm working house, and I do a little bit of development, not so much that you're probably adding another planner, engineer, architect to the task force if you're planning. I know that, I think the borough engineer will be part of that process, but at least I'll come in with some working knowledge, but still hopefully bringing that resident and EAC perspective to, to the task force.
What do you see as our hotspots?
When you say hotspots, what?
Where do we, where do we need to advance?
So, I, I mean, I think, so, I think Kathleen asked this one of the previous interviews too, which is, how do we get the businesses to come in? And we've kind of anchored all of our residents, a lot of our residents, down by the river. And we're asking them to go, how do we get them up there? I know we talked about a jitney, talking about some other, you know, possibly, you know, with the, the road diet, some sort of other transportation options. But I think, I think we want to look a little bit at, how can you get organic growth by having some residential on that side of, of the borough? To kind of, people who want to say, I want to pop down to the, the coffee shop. I don't want to pop down to the coffee shop when I have to walk a mile uphill, right? So, how do we want to, if we want to bring in those kind of businesses, I, I think we would want to think about incentivizing at least some residential mixed use, which is really what we're, when we're looking at what's great about Conshohocken, is the disjointed mixed use, uses that we currently have, you know, First Avenue, Fayette Street, Third Avenue, the Third Avenue section. So, I think that's really important. And one of the other things that I haven't heard mentioned, so I'll mention it, is, I know you probably all hear it, we need a grocery store, right? So, looking at ways to incentivize, how do we get, I don't think, I'm no expert, but I don't think some, you know, big chain might come in, but is there a more walkable, urbanish chain that, with a smaller footprint, that would come in? Maybe if you had a little bit more of a, a larger mixed-use development up on that end, where, where you're not assuming that everyone's going to be driving to get their groceries for the week, but they're going to pop in. They, they want to make a specific dinner that night or something like that.
So, Tim, kind of going off of that idea, are you willing to take on the responsibility of making decisions that are in the best interest of the majority of the borough, even though they may not be what the minority, have the minority opposition? So, the idea of a grocery store, and that would be changing zoning.
Sure.
And that is definitely something that we have gone through in other scenarios. So, are you willing to kind of stand up there and say, this is really what the borough needs in the long run, when you have a minority group saying, no, it's not?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's, that's part of what wanting to be on a task force is, right? I think it's wanting to help set the vision, and like I said, the conversation here has been great. I think having this process and, and looking at it thoroughly is, is really great, and honestly. I know it's an interview, and you're not supposed to blow smoke, but I really appreciate that you're doing this, whether appointed or not. It's really important, and I'm really glad you guys are doing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Does anyone else have any questions for Tim? They all know Tim pretty well, so. How's the baby?
Very good.
Good, good.
Very good.
All right, well, I'm going to say thank you for your interest in coming in, and thank you for all your time and energy on the EAC also. We truly appreciate it, so.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Next person is Matt Donnelly. Good evening, Mr. Donnelly.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing good.
That's good. Thank you for your interest in our overlay committee.
No problem. I love Conshohocken.
That's good. Now, are you a resident or a business owner, or both?
I own real estate in Conshohocken. My primary residence is right in Plymouth Township-
Okay.
With a Conshohocken Mount address.
Yeah.
I operate two businesses in, that's in Conshohocken, one on the corner of Ninth and Fayette, the other on the corner of Sixth and Fayette. And I have a small ownership interest in Bar Sarah with Brian Pieri.
I did not know that.
Very involved in all things Conshohocken. I also coach basketball and baseball locally.
That's in Plymouth, I'm guessing?
Uh, Plymouth and Conshohocken.
Oh, both. Oh, both, okay.
Yeah, baseball is Conshohocken, uh, basketball is Plymouth.
Gotcha.
With the White Marsh.
You're, you're spread out then there, you know?
That's right.
You're, you're building at nine oh one Fayette, the old Bell Telephone Building. Was that a lot of fun for you to, did you personally involved in the, uh, like rehabilitation of that building?
Uh, no, so, uh, Julian owns the building. Uh, we rent the, the second floor.
Right.
Um, so the bank, you know, pretty much had both, both levels of that floor. They weren't using the second floor. We were in, uh, First and Fayette when they knocked down to build the Berresource Bergen Bill, so we got kicked out. Moved into, uh, the second floor there.
It's a beautiful building.
It's a beautiful building. We love it. Yeah.
It is a beautiful building.
Yeah, and then we're on the corner of Sixth and Fayette Street for our property management company.
Okay. At Julian's other building?
Yep, Julian's other building, yep.
Any other, Julian's buildings?
What'd you say?
Just kidding.
What did you say you coached?
Uh, baseball and basketball.
For?
Uh, so for base, so my son is, uh, eight years old now, daughter's seven, so I started coaching, uh, T-ball when they were four or five years old, uh, and then, uh, basketball, probably when he was five years old. So I start off with, uh, for baseball, it's been Conshohocken the whole entire time. Uh, for basketball, it's been White Marsh and now Plymouth.
I'm curious, uh, knowing lots of, I guess, you, or assuming that you know lots of families with similar age children, what are some things that they're hoping, uh, or that you're hearing they're interested in bringing to Fayette Street?
So, uh, all the families I know love Conshohocken, that's why they're here, you know, uh, you know, we don't plan on going anywhere. Everyone I know doesn't plan on going anywhere. Everyone loves kind of all the developments going on and is all in on kind of just seeing how everything progresses. One of the best things, in my opinion, about Conshohocken is certainly the small business owners. They care so much about doing stuff for the community. Uh, we get together, you know, we try to get together once a month, a bunch of us, and just, you know, kind of brainstorm different ideas of things that we can do to, to bring to the community. Like, we gave out two hundred free cheese sticks a couple of months ago. We just did photos with Santa, like, we're always just trying to do stuff because Conshohocken has, uh, so many people that are local, and they care, and they come. It's just a, it's a, it's a fun community to be a part of. I don't have any specific agenda whatsoever with belonging on the, the task force. I'm not coming in with, hey, I want this idea done. It's more so a collaboration, leaning on some of the guys like Dr. Bill and Julian, who've been around the, the block for a very long time, and have these good ideas, and they're able to, to paint that picture. Uh, being in the business that I'm in, um, I deal with small business owners' relationships all the time, so, you know, if you guys do have certain ideas that, you know, that make sense, and that's a collective effort, we say, hey, this is a good idea, who can we bring this out to? That's where my value would kind of come in at, because I have a lot of those relationships. Uh, I have different investors and business owners all the time that, uh, I talk with, I network with, I hang out with. And, uh, if there are good opportunities available to them, uh, I could certainly bring it to them.
Okay, Tim, so I'm going to ask you a question in a, a different way that Tina asked, based on what you've said. So are you willing to take the responsibility of making decisions that are best for the borough, even if they would not necessarily be what your business associates would prefer?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, for me, it's, uh, more of a, a collective effort. Whoever, to say there's, say, ten people are, it's, what's the collective decision that everyone came to, and then we all kind of stay on that decision together as a group.
Okay. And you could take that backlash?
Yeah, I'll take backlash all the time.
Just, just ask it. Who would lie?
Yeah.
So Matt, you're on the commercial side now, I would say?
Uh, mainly residential. We do do some commercial.
Okay. So, um, when you're thinking about, um, connecting the lower end and the upper end of town, and, and listening to what both residents and businesses to come into the town, what are you hearing? And it's kind of a spinoff of what Adrian had asked someone else. What are you hearing that we, why we may not be drawing?
So again, it's just the, the, kind of the dead area, right? What else is there to do there? Um, so the more that we can continue to add certain, you know, I love the small businesses, you know, especially along Fayette Street, I think that's kind of what Conshohocken is, you know, after you get past, uh, First Avenue now. But I, I think that, uh, you know, just the more that you, that we are, be able to continue to add, the better it's, it's going to be, you know? People also realize this is a very old town, and it takes a long time for, uh, for stuff to get updated, but it came a really long way, certainly in the past twenty, thirty years.
Since the eighties. Thanks.
Yeah, since the eighties.
Matt, uh, we, we talked a little bit about, uh, events as a way to connect people in town. Uh, Sarah and I stopped at the, uh, the Santa event that you had. Uh, what, what is something you learned from putting that on, on the upper end specifically?
So people come, as long as you put it out there. So one of the things you got to do is obviously, you know, market and get, get the information out there to people. Um, so, you know, we do a good job just because it's kind of our business, so we have to put information out there. But yeah, I mean, we literally had a hundred and fifty people come when we did the cheesesteak event right to Tenth and Fayette Street. Uh, the Santa Claus thing, we, I think we only had two or three weeks that we really came up with the idea and planned it. And I want to say we had sixty to seventy-five people come, um, on a cold Saturday.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else have any questions for Matt? No. Well, Matt, thank you for coming in. Thank you for your interest and your commitment to the borough. We sincerely appreciate it, and, uh, enjoy the rest of your week.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. No, I appreciate the opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is manager matters, which I will turn over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. The first item for discussion is the RFP for Design Consultant Services for the Sutcliffe Park Trail Reconstruction Project. Um, as you all know, we received a grant through the DCNR. Um, in order to start that process, uh, we actually have to put out an RFP for the design consultant this evening. Um, you received a copy of the RFP. The schedule, uh, presented in that RFP would be that the, would be advertised, if approved, on the, on January nineteenth. The proposal due date would be February sixth. Administration would compile the results from the submission, and then we would put a consideration to award the contract on your agenda for February fifteenth for consideration. This evening, it is just for discussion. If you have any particular questions, if you don't this evening, and you have any over the course of the next two weeks, you can reach out to my office. Um, if not, it'll be back on your agenda on the eighteenth for approval.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Steph? Thank you, Steph.
Great, thank you. Uh, the next item is to approve the VFW event request for use of the Marywood Park House. Uh, the Marywood Park House hours of operation is that they close at five PM. The VFW is requesting that they can utilize the facility at seven PM. Um, we would be staffing the event at that point, so that would be a budget item for consideration. The VFW has indicated that they would comply with all the other special event regulations. I think it's also an opportunity, I know that Walt indicated in his letter to the borough requesting the event, that, um, uh, even having it at this public meeting is providing some publicity for this great event that's going to happen in February. So, um, I am going to ask for a motion this evening for approval so that they can move forward with their event plans, if so inclined.
Okay. So does, does anyone on council have any questions for Walt about the event before we?
No, Walt, this is a hundred-year signing. Ninety-year?
Nineteen thirty-three.
And it, it happened at the Marywood Park House, correct?
Yeah, the original, uh, charter was signed at Marywood Park House, uh, seventy, uh, fifty-six. Uh, the initial people signed the, uh, if you look at the names, they're the, the who's who's names of Conshohocken at that time.
Right.
It was in nineteen thirty-three, and you're talking to these other guys that served in Battery City, um, that served in World War One, and, you know. And so, yeah, it's pretty historic. We're trying to just replicate it. We're going to go in, and we're going to re-sign a proclamation charter. We're going to do it in the same building, on the same desk, in the same room, um, you know, to kind of tie it all together, and then we're going to enjoy the rest of the evening. We're going to have a, you know, a party down in the coast.
That's great.
Yeah, we really just hope, I've got a lot of my members here, and it showed up, you know, I could never get these guys here. I totally tried to get this, and they were very excited, you know, to have this event happen, so yeah, I do appreciate it.
And we're very happy for you to, um, want to have it at the Park House.
Yeah, mentally. I mean, I, I can't say that this is what we get from council, you know, every time we come and do something, every time I ask the mayor or any of you, I think we've been talking about getting a proclamation written for that day from, you know, the council.
Yes.
So I mean, I do appreciate everything you guys do for us, you know, and we try to be proud partners with you guys as much as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Even the talk today kind of give me a bright spot, because I love hearing about what's happening here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. So the motion this evening for council is to approve the VFW event request for the use of the Marywood Park House contingent upon final administration review.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I would just like to make one statement. Walt, congratulations. You will be the first to use the Park House as its history and its current and future. So that's very exciting. Um, thank you for thinking about that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, Walt, what is the date for that event?
It'll be February third. It'll be Friday, February third. Obviously, every-
I know we have it, but-
Um, yeah, it'll be seven PM to eight PM, and then we both, we hope to have the signing at seven thirty. We're going to get in there at seven o'clock, make sure we have everything laid out. We're going to have some, um, you know, some of our older veterans are obviously going to be coming in, you know, we got to make sure we have accommodations for them, try to set up the best we can for them.
Right.
Um, I understand, say after hour, if we're going to try to be in and out of there now by eight o'clock, so we can go back and do it with them, but, uh, I appreciate the, uh, consideration and the approval. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The last item I have is to consider approving the elimination of a waiting period for the health insurance start date for new hires. Um, as everyone is aware, the prospective employee pool has drastically changed since the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The workplace has also changed drastically. Um, we will be utilizing the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year to evaluate and amend borough Conshohocken personnel policies in order to ensure that our policies are up to date. Um, most importantly, we are always trying to be competitive in today's market in order to attract quality candidates as applicable. Um, the first of those recommendations is going to be to eliminate the waiting period, which currently, right now, is ninety days. So we are working with Divit, who is our healthcare insurance provider, and our trust documents to, um, ask permission to amend those documents so that it accurately reflects the elimination period. In order for me to proceed with that process, I do need approval from Borough Council. Um, and again, this will be one of a few recommendations that we will be presenting this year, again, in order to ensure that we are attracting quality candidates that provide quality service to both our residents, constituents, and business owners.
Thank you, Steph. Anyone have any questions on that? Okay. So the motion this evening is to authorize the borough manager to work directly with the Delaware Valley Health Trust to request permission to eliminate the waiting period for the borough's health insurance start date for new hires.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Excuse me. The last item on the agenda is under council member and mayor matters. The first item is considered approving the twenty-twenty-three annual Conshohocken Arts Festival and Car Show. So I will turn this over to Mayor Aronson.
All right, thank you, President Leonard. Um, so we usually start this process a little later, but, uh, with a baby on the way, uh, we're trying to front load as much of this planning as we can before life changes. Uh, so we, uh, expect this to be very similar to last year, going from Eleventh Avenue to First Avenue, um, a stage at the Masonic Lodge, and a stage at the library. Um, and overall, it should look, uh, almost exactly as it was last year. Um, and we will certainly go through the same process as always with our administrative staff and emergency services. So we're just asking, uh, council's permission to hold the event on June third, twenty-twenty-three.
June third, okay. So the motion this evening for council is to approve the twenty-twenty-three annual Conshohocken Arts Festival and Car Show on June third, twenty-twenty-three, with a rain date of June tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor Aronson. Um, is there anyone this evening for any public comment? No, okay. So Mayor Aronson, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, it has been a shockingly quiet couple of weeks since our last meeting, so, so no official updates. Uh, just want to wish everyone a successful twenty-twenty-three, and, um, maybe I'll be here in two weeks. We'll see.
Maybe, we'll see. Uh, Stacy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Anita?
Uh, just a happy new year to everybody, and let's plow ahead for twenty-twenty-three.
There we go, which we are starting this evening, right? Kathleen?
Just the same as Anita, happy new year, everybody.
Adrian?
Happy new year.
I don't have anything to add, but I'd like to say that I, going through all the interviews, this evening is really exciting. It's nice to see that the community is all that we think it is. We have so many people from so many different, um, parts of town, and different things that they can bring to do. Conshohocken's a definitely a good place. So thank you, everyone, for your interest.
Tina?
Uh, I just wanted to say that December twenty-third, we had that weird storm right before the holidays, where we had a lot of ice and wind, and, um, our borough crew stuck around, volunteered to stick around, um, to watch the weather and, um, clean up what needed to be cleaned up, um, salt, pre-salt the roads. Um, so they did that on their own without having to be called in because they felt it was very important that we all could celebrate the holidays with our families without having the difficulties of what that crazy storm brought in.
Right, right, it did.
Um, and then with that, um, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about the snowflake controversy?
I actually do. I would like to thank Ray for being very quick to address the issue of the damaged snowflakes after, look at him back there, after the storm. Getting the utility company out to get them removed so that residents and drivers did not get hurt from them. Um, I, thank God, with your intuition, we did put that in the budget for net, this year. So new decorations are in there, and the snowflakes can be laid to rest.
How old are they?
They're twenty, twenty.
Twenty-plus years?
Twenty-some years. But I do thank you for your quickness, right, in getting that taken care of so that none of them fell and pieces of them didn't go anywhere or hurt anybody or damaged cars or anything. So I do appreciate that. And as Tina said, I appreciate the borough workers for hanging around before the holiday because we, I believe, wasn't that the day we were going to let them go leave a little earlier? Because of the weather, and they stayed anyway, so.
It was. They, they won't take the credit for it, but-
They won't, but they did.
While everyone else was getting ready to enjoy their holiday, they were together at the Public Works facility, ready to spring into action should they be needed.
They're great. So with that, I will say thank you to Ray, and thank you to Public Works, and me adjourned.